Good evening. Welcome to Queenence County Board of Education Work Sessions from May the 19th. Do I have a motion?
Pursuant to the general provisions, Article 3-305, the Board of Education of Queenence County will meet in closed session, discuss a matter directly related to negotiating strategy, and to discuss matters that relate to the negotiations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for a motion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. We'll be back in about a half an hour. Welcome to Queenence County Board of Education Work Sessions from May the 19th, 2021. Who stands for the pledge?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Members, you've had a chance to look at minutes for May the 5th, open, closed, and executive. And we also have May the 4th, executive closed. Has everybody had a chance to read those?
Mm-hmm.
Have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes for May 5th and all the minutes for May 4th.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, we have an agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Smith, may I make a motion to amend the current agenda to include 3.07 new superintendent contract approval?
Do you have a second?
Second.
You've heard the discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Mr. Smith, I make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys. Our first president?
Ms. Towers is going to come and talk with us about the restricted budget.
Amy, you noted that is 3.06, so we're just moving farther down?
No, adding 3.07. It's adding it.
I know, but we're at 4.1 now.
We're at 3.1.
No, 3.01 is, it's been removed. Okay, I'm sorry. I got the wrong agenda.
That's okay.
Gotcha, okay. You're on.
Good evening, President Smith, Dr. Kane, board members. Tonight we bring before you restricted budget amendment 1 and 2. Just some background on this. Normally, you're used to seeing restricted budget amendments for the unrestricted. We need to start bringing restricted to the board quarterly or monthly like we do our unrestricted. And that way, it gives you an opportunity to take a look at what grants that have been awarded to us. And it's based upon COMAR, too. So, but budget, restricted budget amendment number 1, we want to take a look at that. The first column, I'll explain. I'm looking at this Excel spreadsheet here that we have. If you look at the first column here, the total amount is $7,376,465. And that was from the approved budget for fiscal year '20. So that was our starting point. Throughout the year, we've received different grant awards. And there's actually a listing that I've provided for you. And it lists all the grants that we've received so far this year. And you can take a look. It's over 88 grants. The restricted amendment number 1 is for 2.6, well, over 2.6 million. And that gets us to where, other than the two ESSR grants, so we're looking for approval on the restricted. And like I said, going forward, either quarterly or monthly, as we get grant awards, it will be taken for approval like we do the unrestricted budget amendment.
So this 2.6 million is additional grants that have come in throughout the year?
Correct.
And we're just wrapping them all up to finish off our fiscal year this year?
Mm-hmm. So COMAR specifically states in COMAR 5-1-05 that the board must approve the source, the funding source, along with the manner in which it's being used. It's just something that I'm used to taking and just wanting to get us updated, and that way you have it for your review, too, as well.
So this $10,288,900 that's already been spent?
Not spent. It's been awarded to the school system.
Okay.
In fiscal year '21.
And then this is the list of all the different ways and places that it's going to?
Yes.
So this, I mean, I would think in the future should maybe be brought to us quarterly or something rather than the last?
Definitely. It hasn't been done in the past. I've looked through board docs through the years, and it's just something that, it puts on everyone's radar, too, that we've gotten this grant award and that this is going to be the purpose of the grant.
And these grants come in throughout the year, I know, all the time.
Correct.
We just got, what, Mr. Page was just here telling us they got $100,000 to do something that was great. So.
And then that way, you can see it in list form then, too, as well, and you notify periodically then as well.
I think that would be a lot better to see it, you know, as we, you know, we hear about it, and then all of a sudden they come in. And if we do it like on a quarterly, if you could get the superintendent or myself and make sure we put this on the agenda on a, you know, on a basis that you feel comfortable with.
Of course. So right now, you need a motion from us to accept, is it going to be 2 million or is it going to be the 10?
It is going to be the, budget number 1 will be the $2,652,424, which will bring it to the $10,028,890 would be for the first one that we bring before you tonight.
Okay.
So you have restricted budget amendment number 1, physical amount of $2,652,428. Budget source is restricted funds on FY '21.
So moved.
Any further discussion?
It's $424. I think you said 428.
I'm sorry.
Correct.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
I think you needed a second. You need a second first.
I'll second.
Have them first, and I'm going to second. Any discussion? All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it, 4-0.
All right. The restricted budget amendment number 2 that we bring before you tonight is for the two ESSR grants, ESSR 1 and ESSR 2 totaling $3,746,613.
So the first ESSR care funds of the $720,000, that's already been spent?
Correct.
Okay. And we spent a portion of it on books with the ESSR 2 last meeting?
The ESSR 2, it was correct, approved for the summer workbooks, yes.
Okay.
And then tonight, there will be also for the, is it reading, Dr. Kane, LA?
Correct. Oh, the materials of instruction?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
That's needed?
Yes.
Do we have any questions, by?
Yeah, I do. I would like to see a revised on the ESSR 2, because I think in my emails to everyone, I was asking if we couldn't approve it as we go along, as it's needed in July. Really, I mean, we have $3 million. We need to spread a little bit further. I understand about summer school, and I certainly want to do the materials instruction for summer school, which we can do at 3.05. But right now, the $720,000, we can go ahead and approve because it's already been spent. But I would like to have, you know, the PPP and all the other things that were listed on there. I'd really like to have a better number on that before we go ahead and approve all $3 million.
Now, a thought could be, if you would like, is to maybe have a committee like the policy committee for the ESSR 2. Now, what we're asking tonight is to actually approve the award that's given to us and the manner in which it's to be used, and the manner in which it's to be used is COVID-related and learning loss. I think maybe what you're trying to say is the direction that you want to give the superintendent or the staff is that, is that anything for expenses that you would like to either see to committee or maybe email first or?
Well, I mean, you've sent us this about the materials of instruction for summer school, which definitely needs to be purchased now through those funds. Yes, I would like to see, I would like to see an up-to-date what we're going to be doing come July 1st. I would like that, you know, I don't want to do it all in one fell swoop, and we need it for later on.
We first have to approve the award, and then I think you want to give direction that going forward, that any expenses would?
Have to be approved by the board?
Yes.
So that motion can be made?
Let me make this clear. What we're asking for now is this is to accept the grant?
Award.
Award.
Yes.
And ESSR 2, I think, goes to September 24?
23.
23.
ESSR 3 goes to 24.
Okay. So this $3,26,41, we have time?
Right.
What you're doing is accepting the grant under certain things. We still have the ability to move this around?
Correct. So the request is to accept the award, and then it sounds like the direction of the board would be is that any request would be either run through a committee or through the board. So?
Through the superintendent, through the board.
Correct. Correct. And we have Mr. Kentuck here, because there's going to be a couple other things that he's going to need to purchase, too, as well, for the summer school program in addition to the workbooks that are coming through.
So this needs to be amended anyway?
Yes.
But this is in the back sheet on here, does have everything where it's being sent to?
No, we got a list. For the ESSR 2 funds, we were given a list, and of course, the needs have changed since February for when it was approved. So that's why I'm asking, you know, it's a working document at this point, because all those funds are not going to be allocated to where they had originally thought. Yes, well, there's some PPEs that needs to be purchased, and yes, there's some stipends that have to come out of there. Summer school, you know, staff has to be paid, workbooks have to be bought. There was a few other things in there that I had sent some questions over. So, you know, if we have to accept it now, that's fine, but I would definitely have it with the caveat that the board gets to see the expenditures and approves them.
Would that be through email or?
However, okay.
All my information I got here, the last page has restricted budget amendment number 2 for ESSR 2.
Yes.
Then it's totaling $13,775.
Correct.
That is 1, 2, and what else?
It is the original plus restricted 1 and restricted 2 amendments. We are busy in the grant department. Normally, we see around 8 million a year in our federal grants, and as you can see, we're at 13.7 now, and it doesn't even, you know, in.
You know.
3.
I just tend to agree with Tam, which is to approve the blanket amount, but I think we really do need to take a look at how it was, how it's being distributed. There are some different needs, and it's really changed now with the PPE stuff and what might be needed by some of the schools.
Could I ask Mr. Kentuck to come up, because there may be some additional items that he will need, and I don't want to hold him up in addition to what is going to be presented tonight at 3.05.
Come on, Mr. Kentuck. Sure. Ms. Towers, is this also this, is this where we would pull, possibly pull that million from?
Yes.
Or, okay.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Good evening.
As far as the summer programming goes, the concern that I have is if in each of the line items that we've put in, which we did put in in February, because we are estimating who is going to be in summer school, what we're going to need supply-wise, what I would ask is the approval of the money to run the summer school program with the knowledge that there may be amendments to it, because we may not use everything that we had originally planned for. But if we're only approving workbooks, say, at this point, we have planning money that we have to pay people, we have to put out a salary to get teachers to want to be a part of this, we have to be able to allocate, say, we've got this much money assigned to pay, we've got transportation needs that we're meeting with the LLCs, that we have to be able to say we have the money secured that we can do buses, the PPE that we'll need, all those types of things, we have to plan for now, and we have to know that that money will be there and not do all that work and get there, and then all of a sudden possibly have a change and say we can't do those things. So I understand what you're asking about in the big picture, but as far as the summer school program goes, most of the things that we're planning, we kind of have to lock in now so that we can start getting people on board, getting positions in place, and things of that nature.
Do we by chance have a ballpark, we're giving it at the last meeting, and I apologize, I didn't bring those sheets here. Do we have a ballpark figure on that?
I don't. The ESSR 2 grant was broken down based on supplies and not just summer school, per se.
Yeah, I know.
Exactly.
I mean, I guess the question is, like, in summer school, staffing, transportation, supplies, and incidental things, are we talking 1, 1.5, 2 million or something? I mean, just a rough figure?
Add it together here.
And it's not a rough figure, it's an exact figure, what you use it, but, you know, things can vary depending on what anticipation we have in this.
Because we can make a motion now and knock that out right now.
Yeah, just to be clear, the board's responsibility is to allow the district to receive those funds, not a line-by-line, yes, no, that's not, that's not the manner, right, in which you have authority. That's the superintendent and the staff's job. If it falls over the threshold for 25,000, that's coming to the board.
Which are the 2 workbooks that we brought? One, the math last time, and the English?
And these here. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay. Well, I thought back in June that we had already granted the 720,000 back in June of 2020.
That is correct, but that was for fiscal year '20, '21. The funds weren't even spent.
But they were used in July of 2020. I got you. Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate it, that. So at this point, Mr. Smith, we are just being told to allow the acceptance of the $3,700,000.
So the bottom line is like we're being asked to approve the grant, accepting the grants, ESSR 1, 2, and it's going to be in this next year, because it's coming up in July?
Correct. That's when it will be spent.
Yeah, and the total, the total will be $3,746,612,98. And the restricted funds by what the grant is going to cover.
So moved. Yeah. If I can inter, some of it will be spent in June to paper the workbooks and things like that.
Summer school starts on June 17, so salaries and some costs will be incurred before July 1.
This is to give authority to do?
To at least get that started.
Right.
So, so moved on your motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it, 4-0.
Thank you, Mr. Kentuck. Thank you, Ms. Towers.
I forget summer.
So next, Mrs. Smith is going to come forward. We have 2 contracts for approval for special education.
Good evening, President Smith, Dr. Kane, board members, executive team members. I come before you tonight to request approval for an amendment to an existing contract for, I believe, Isoliant, the first one you have?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
It's for an additional $26,000 to be added to the original contract amount, and that was to offset additional services that were required as a result of COVID. So we had to do additional assessments this year, and we've also had to pull additional services during the summer that we didn't originally anticipate.
I had a quick question. We had tabled this on May 5, I believe, and on the amount asked for on May 5, it said the current contract was 126,000, and you're asking for an additional 10,000 for a total of 136,000, and now 2 weeks later, asking for 141,000. Where did that difference come in?
So when I originally put the yellow sheet in at the last board meeting, I was working off of a spreadsheet that I have in my office, and my administrative assistant had already added the amount on there, and I wasn't aware of that, so I was using an incorrect number. So if you added the additional amount that I was originally requesting to the last amount, you'll get this amount.
And when this says, ma'am, when this says unrestricted special education category, that is out of which dollars?
Local funds.
Local funds. Thank you.
And it says affects 2 schools. What 2 schools?
This particular provider provides services at Stevensville Middle School as well as Bayside Elementary School. But I will tell you that she's also been providing services to other schools as well. So one of the months, for example, that she was working that was unanticipated was during the month, the summer months, and so she was covering assessments throughout the county.
And this is the same issue we've had in past years of not being able to hire this staff person, right?
We did make some progress this past year, and we were able to hire 2 direct hire school psychologists, so we only have 1 to go.
Yay.
Okay, Amy.
So to make a motion to approve the amended contract purchase order for Solian Health for school psychology services for the total impact dollar amount of 141,510.50. Budget source is unrestricted special education category.
And basically, all they're asking this time is for additional $26,000 for that, bring that number to that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it, 4-0.
So I also bring before you a similar request for Tuskegee speech. This particular provider covers 2 providers, and it's a total of 4 schools. Same situation, we had additional assessments. We've actually had more assessments this year than we originally anticipated because of learning loss and suspected disabilities. So in this particular case, the amount is 52,000, and that is to get us through the month of April, May, and half of June.
And again, same question last time. 2 weeks ago, we asked for 192,000, and now you're asking for 207,000.
Exact same situation. So it was just, the number was already there, and I wasn't aware of that. So that's my error, and I apologize. I thought I had more sitting on the purchase order remaining than I did.
Thanks.
And this is also coming under restricted special ed, which is out of our operating budget?
Correct.
Is that a Q? Has to be, does it say the same problem next year? I know, I know it's a moving target, because you never know, because it can vary a lot, but.
I don't anticipate the number of assessments that we had this year in terms of them being contracted positions. I don't foresee a big difference there. It's just not a position that we're easily able to fill directly, but I anticipate a slight decline in assessments. I don't think it's the same decline that we'll see in the year after that, just because, again, I think we're kind of still in that flux state, and we still have a lot of students that are out and not in.
So being out of probably affects it more as far as?
It does, yes. And I anticipate that a lot of our students that were out to be homeschooled will come back, and when they do that, if they've been gone, you know, away from us for a period of time, we do have to reassess them.
I've got a request for contractual amendment approval for Tuskegee speech for additional 52,000 on the current contract of 155,400 for a total of 207,400 out of unrestricted special education category. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it, 4-0.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Are you also doing a special staffing?
So this was the presentation that Ms. Smith shared with us during the last board meeting, and this time, we are seeking approval for the staffing, the special education staffing plan that was presented.
We just do the whole, the whole thing?
Yes, there haven't been any changes to that.
Okay.
It, I just didn't have a yellow sheet for you last time, so.
And this is both unrestricted and restricting and the operating budget?
Correct.
Just the whole plan?
It's the whole plan.
All the personnel, no additional FTEs.
Do I have any other things, Ms. Smith? I have a FY special education staffing plan, approval for FY '22 special education for submission to Maryland State Department of Education. Budget source FY unrestricted and restricted operating budget, we've seen.
So moved.
Do I have a first and a second? Do I have any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
4-0.
Do you second?
You did.
I'm sorry.
You just moved right along. It was okay.
Recr, no, no, please, please. You have a second?
No, I didn't know if we got a second.
Oh, I thought you had.
She moved.
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you. So our next contract is for WonderWorks for English Language Arts Materials of Instruction, and we have Mrs. Pullen, I'm sorry, Mrs. Passon, ELA supervisor, and also Mrs. McNeil, early childhood, among other things, Title I.
Yeah, throw all those hats in there. Walk in with your hats on.
Good evening, President Smith, Dr. Kane, and board members. We're here tonight to ask for approval of funding for, as Dr. Kane stated, our WonderWorks interactive text and the teacher edition companion to support K through 5 in our summer program we've created to help with our students recover learning. The cost is $43,365.93 from ESSR 2.
I just had a couple of questions. I noticed on the quotes that were re-prepared, it said WonderWorks 2014. Is that when this program was developed, was in 2014?
Yes. So we have WonderWorks 2000, we have Wonders 2014 in K through 5 right now. So this is a supplemental piece to what we already have in our schools. If we went with a different year, we would have had to go through the whole MOI process and pilot things, and so we're not there.
And so that's, and it says it's for a year? So are we using this for 2 summers, or is it just the summer? Is that just, we, all of the things that it was for?
This is just for the 2 different summer programs.
Right, but it says, but on the.
It's a year subscription. That's all they.
They don't do, they just do a year?
Oh, unfortunately.
So could we use it for?
We can certainly use them and send them on with our students to be used for small group instruction next year. Yes.
And this, the number of students we're having in the summer program, this, I mean, we have a good count on what that's going to be needed for and all that. I know it's probably a moving target sometimes.
We plan for the optimal amount, which would be 36 divided by 2, 18 in each session. So that is the number, so that we wouldn't have to keep coming back to you or come to you in the middle of each session, because we'll be lucky to get these in by the first day of the summer program if they are so approved. We thought we'd come to you with the optimal, with the maximum request.
So this, so, but you have to, do you buy these in advance, or do you then just find your number and then order it, or do we just have?
We don't have all our numbers yet. So right now, we're ordering for the maximum amount of students per grade level that we will, we can permit.
And as Ms. Bennett said, it can be used later if we had to?
Yes, absolutely. They will follow the students.
Okay.
Because the students get to keep their interactive text.
Any other questions? We have a motion for WonderWorks K through 5 summer school to request approval of certain materials instead of textbooks for the reading, reading, English Language Arts summer program K 5. Physical impact is $43,365.93, and the budget source is ESSR 2.
So moved.
Second.
First and a second. Any further questions? All, favor say aye?
Aye.
4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
You, too.
Next, we have Mrs. Pullen with a capital request.
Good evening, President Smith, board members, and Dr. Kane. For the record, my name is Carla Pullen. I'm serving as the interim chief operating officer. I'm here with you this evening to request approval of a contract with JCI Simplex to replace the fire alarm system and the associated components at Churchill Elementary School. replace the fire alarm system and the associated components at Churchill Elementary School. Our current fire alarm system there was installed in 1997. It is now obsolete. It's very difficult to get parts when something is no longer working. Because it's a life safety component, it is a priority project for us to complete this summer. We are utilizing the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Agreement, which is an already bid contract, for this particular contract. This system will give us an upgrade to voice evacuation and also remote operation, which is more state-of-the-art than what we currently have in that building. The cost implication is 159,053.92. This is a state-funded project as well, so there is a cost difference split between the state and the county funding that was budgeted for in fiscal year 20. So I am requesting your approval tonight for this project and I am happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, is this a firm fixed?
Yes, it is. Yes, lump sum pricing based on that cooperative contract.
So it's, it was, it's a sole source or it was bid out to?
It was bid as part of the cooperative contract, so they received the bids and then because we participate with Sourcewell-
That's right.
We are able to utilize that bid pricing as well.
Thank you.
And we've dealt with this company before?
We have, yes. We standardize with Simplex. It's the ease of our maintenance staff working on the Simplex system as well as ease of getting parts. We don't have to go through a distributor like we do with some of the other systems. We can get the parts direct.
And JCI is Johnson Controls?
Yes.
Most of our buildings?
Our automation.
Automations are all through-
Yes, much of our automation and they now own Simplex.
Wow.
Yes.
So our maintenance staff is familiar with it and I mean, it's-
They are. It's, it's their preferred, they have the knowledge to work on it and do a lot of that maintenance in-house.
How long do they anticipate it, how long do these systems now last if we're?
About 20 years is the typical.
I make a motion, sir, to approve the contract with JCI Simplex to replace the fire alarm system and associated components at the Churchill Elementary School. Fiscal impact dollar amount 159,053.92. Budgets for source is FY 2020 state capital funding of 81,117.50 and FY 2020 capital, county capital funding of 77,936.42.
Second.
A motion and a second. Do I have any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pullen.
Thank you.
Okay. 3.07, sir?
3.07. Ms. Harper, do you want to address that or?
I appreciate that, sir. I need, as you know, the board members have been going through the process of interviewing for a new superintendent. I'd like to make the motion to approve the four-year contract for the superintendent's position starting on July 1st, 2020 to Dr. Patricia Salins.
Second.
Second. Discussion. I think we've gone through a long process and I feel very happy about this. I think we've come to a consensus, a complete consensus and it's been a very positive thing. I want to thank also Maeve for helping us out with this consulting thing. Ms., right, could you do roll? Yeah, roll, just call us each.
Oh, roll call, sorry. I didn't mean-
First and a second, I'm sorry.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Morsette?
Yes.
Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
unanimous vote?
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Okay, our next agenda, we have future school board meetings, but June the 2nd, school board meeting and June the 16th, a work session, but may I suggest we probably need to put on to 26 a budget for next Wednesday. Does board members have, Mr. Dr. Kane, do you? This county will be looking at their budget on the Tuesday. We've got to make some decisions after that. We've got, you know, a lot of our numbers in, but there can be some decisions that have to be made and I guess we still have the state with a couple floaters out there we're hoping to get approved by then. Does everybody feel comfortable with a meeting on the 26th?
Yes.
I was suggesting for a time, 4, 5 o'clock or?
Generally, your work sessions are 5 o'clock.
5 o'clock, it's 5 o'clock, good for everybody. Sorry for your staff.
Yes, we will be here.
Okay, so I'd like to post that Jeff, that we'll have another work session on May the 26th, we'll budget. June the 2nd will be our school board meeting and June the 16th will be another work session, which is going to be closing out our, this year's school year.
Mr. Smith, may I ask too, we have the 21, 22 school board meeting scheduled, we have not approved that.
Mm-hmm.
Are we going to do that at the June meeting, sir?
Yes, I think we'd look at the June meeting.
Okay.
I think everybody needs to take a hard look at that because we got a few things we got to do in June and July, but-
Okay, thank you, sir.
We can bring that up. Do I have a motion to go into?
Pursuant to general provisions, Article 3-305, the Board of Education in Queen Anne's County would like to move into executive closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation removal, resignation or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction and to perform an administrative function.
Have a second?
Second.